Let's call this meeting. This is our public hearing for Ware County Board of Commissioners on the 3rd of February the 6th, 25 at 6:00 PM. And before we call this meeting order, I'm going to ask Mr. Burris if he would, would he lead us in prayer?
Goodbye, his. Father in the name of Jesus, Lord, we thank you, oh God, for this day. We thank you, oh God, for how you blessed us, oh God. And we pray, God, to you, a blessing so that we deliberate the business of this county. Pray, God, to you, give us divine wisdom and knowledge, oh God, to make the right decision because they will impact our citizens. And for we thank you for your son, Jesus, down for our sins. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to do a roll call. Mr. Burris.
Brother.
Mr. Tindall.
Here.
Mr. Lucas. Mr. Barry Cox. Okay. These are general items for House Bill 581, adjusted base year, Adlarum Homestead exemption. The purpose of this public hearing is to educate the public and hear public comment regarding the Ware County Board of Commissioners intent to opt out of the statewide adjusted base year of Adlarum Homestead exemption for Ware County. Now. This is Roger.
Yeah, Roger back there.
Roger, you want to come up? I guess you're the only one to come and talk on it. We don't know, we've got to go through it again, I guess. We've got three times.
All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Roger.
How's everybody doing?
Just fine.
So what would you like to ask? What were you going to do? Explain it again.
We still support to opt out. Is that correct?
I do. I mean, that's my professional opinion, it's the best thing for Ware County.
Okay.
Um, it, the 581 is good for counties that do not have a freeze. And that's, do not have a school freeze, do not have a city freeze, and the county freeze. We like one of the only counties in the state that does. There's 30 counties that have freezes, some sort of type of freeze. And it's not really going to help them. But everybody, everybody's different. There's 159 counties and every county is different. But 581 will help Clinch County, will help Acton, Coffee County. I think Pecan.
Yeah, Pecan.
But it's not going to help Ware County. Um, I don't know if the city of Blackshear has a freeze for Patterson. But it's the county, Pierce County residents on the county portion, county taxes is not going to help them. Um, because they have a freeze. Right in the county, they're, they have a county freeze, but I don't know about their cities. But we're, we're really unique that we have freezes across the board. And in the end, it's not going to do a bit of good for the taxpayers. It's not going to save them any money. There's no advantage for Ware County taxpayers from staying in 581. What I see is it's a disadvantage because it's going to cause more workforce assessors and will probably end up costing more money for the, for the commission to fund the assessors. Whether that be having more equipment, extra people, and that in itself comes back off the taxpayers. They're, they're, they'll win despite our freeze. And there's an advantage, you know, if it's, if 581 stated that if both, if everybody was in, in it, 581, they could do a floss, a floating local option sales tax, anywhere from a half penny to a, to a full penny. And that's agreement between the city and county, the cities and other counties, but in ours, you know, between city of Waycross and Ware County. The, the split, and when y'all come to agreement, then y'all can put it on the referendum for the people of Ware County to vote. And that is for property tax rollback only. It's just for property taxes. And that will roll back the millage rate tremendously if it's, if it's passed or whatever. So, and I say that's if you're, if you was in it, but in our case, with our freezes as considered a floating local homestead freeze, we can opt out and we're still eligible for the floating local sales tax. And that's where I see the win-win. Saves, it saves the county money from the assessors having, always have to end up putting more money into having, having to hire more people. Have to keep track of four fair market aid numbers now. That would be, as it is. I had to use my words right. Why? That it, it does not make sense for them to have to track for them. It's, it's a number that, that will never come into play anywheres in the taxes of these homesteads. And that's strictly for homesteads. That 581 strictly homestead. And our freeze is much better. And I will say the floss, I do want to reiterate, the floss is for everybody, every parcel. Doesn't matter if you're commercial, homesteaded, real estate, if you're a real estate investor. Every parcel in Ware County gets a, gets a sales tax rollback.
So I know this may not be your department, but you might know. Do you know how many homestead lots we have or parcels we have that are under homestead?
I believe it's, it's a little over 4,600.
Okay. So that's 4,600 that we would have to keep up with the additional
Yes.
uh, valuation based on 581 that would not come into play at any time because even if we are under 581 with the freeze that the state has, our freeze supersedes that.
That's correct.
And we will not, so the only difference is, is that we're going to have to keep up with up to 4,000 or 5,000 additional numbers.
Yeah.
Okay.
Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Tax Commissioner, you know, and as I stated at our first public hearing, I've been to two or three classes on this 581 because I wanted to get all the information I could about this bill and to, so I could understand it, so I could disseminate it out to the citizens whenever they ask about it. And based on the classes that I've gone to, based on the Zoom classes that I've taken and all the information that I've downloaded and gotten, at the end of the day, I'd say we, we have the best thing right now. Even when you go to these other counties, when you're with these other classes, because like you say, we are unique in that we have this frozen homestead on school, city, and the county right now. And so, uh, the only thing I had reservation about was that if we opt out, would we have the opportunity to put on a referendum? It would be left up to the citizens for the floating, floating local option sales tax, which would reduce the millage rate considerably if the sales tax come in like it's been coming in. So this is why I think it's, in this case right here, it's best that we opt out of it because right now we have the best thing. And if opting in, it's not going to really benefit us at all. If anything, it may put a little bit added burden on the county because like I said, whenever you start having to keep up all these different tracts and parcels, you're going to have to have bodies to do that. And in order to get bodies to do that, you're going to have to pay them.
That's right.
But let me ask something, Commissioner Burris.
Yes, sir.
Do we, can we, if we, if we stay in, can we still ask for that once in? That we could still do that?
Yeah.
So yes.
If we opt in, yes, we could do it.
If we stay in, we're, we're eligible to do it.
Do the same thing.
But if we opt out, we can do it and we're not subject to having to keep up with those additional numbers.
Right.
That's correct.
That's, that's, that's the big difference right there.
You just don't have to keep up with it.
Right.
You don't want, you don't want to have the extra work.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm sitting there thinking that, you know, if we're, let's just say you have to hire on three new people in the appraiser's office, I'm just speculating. There's three people, three people that are training, three computers, three desks. I mean, we could be close to $200,000 after the first year, if you consider training.
For the, with the training and all that.
Yeah.
It's definite. Um, because they, they have to be certified.
Right.
They got to go to enough, to classes and they got to pass it. They got to have a test for every class they go to.
Right.
And they got to pass that, where there's a search for it that they have and they have to pass. Then when that, once they got all those credits, then they can go to take the appraisal test. And they have to pass that before they can even go and do anything, when, go and actual praise on their own. That would be riding buddies.
And, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
And just to kind of put it, let us put it in layman's terms to where we can all understand it. For instance, I'm just going to use a hypothetical here. Right now, our county miller grade is what, 11 meals, right?
11.736.
Okay, 11.736. So, okay, Mr. and Ms. Miles right there, they own a home. Okay, so they're going to pay the taxes based on that 11 meals. So just say if the taxes were a thousand dollars. But if you had this floating local, local option sales types, if the voters voted on that, and this money will be earmarked just to go strictly to a part, just to offset the millage rate. Say if it reduces their meal down five meals, that's going to be a considerable less tax that they would have to pay. And the good thing about that is that with this, like, just like it's floss tax and your local option sales tax, you have people that's coming from outside this community that's shopping here, that's buying, that's really helping pay your taxes. Because, you know, you're getting a redu, reduction on your millage rate. Yeah, you'll be paying a penny more on, on item maybe, but at the end of the day, that's on all your properties. Running properties, uh, making lots, whatever. And, uh, so that's why I'm thinking, you know, based on the information I've gotten, you know, uh, I think it's the best thing right now. And one other thing too, Roger, before, and as I said at the last meeting, they write these bills and it seems like they write them on purpose, kind of confusing. They have all this different legalese and they add all this kind of stuff, but at the end of the day, they, I think sometimes do it by design, make it confusing, but if we stick with this bill like it is right now in its present format, they gave the option to opt in or opt out. So that lets me know right there, if it was, if they say, hey, you just got to vote on this and you got to have it, you know, you got to opt in and didn't give you that provision where you could opt out. Uh, to me, that lets me know that, that it's certain, it's a genuine circumstance, just like in our case, where we can opt out.
That's great. And, um, that was a valid question. Was, part of that valid question was to allow the local governors to opt out. And I want to, I want to say something, I want to reiterate what I said last time. This is not designed to take anybody's homestead away. It's not designed to raise money for taxes for the county, the school or the city. That's not what 581 plus or is, and that's not what opting out is going to do. So I won't, because I, I keep getting messages, what's this going to do to our homestead? Y'all just trying to raise taxes. I tell you, I'm, I'm, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm lying, I'm, I'm going, I'm going to go down Tahiti's here shortly. I don't like paying taxes. It's my job to collect them. I don't like paying taxes, just like no, anybody. Nobody likes it, but this is a necessary deal. But I don't want to pay more than my fair share, just like Commissioner Tindall does it, Commissioner Burris, Commissioner Thrive, and each and everybody here. Nobody wants to pay more than their fair share. And this is not designed and it will not raise your taxes for, for anything. This, this opting out is just, just an administration thing where it saves the county money because it's, the taxpayers already get the best thing. They're, they're frozen homesteads. So whenever they sign up a homestead, they're frozen. Doesn't matter how many years, how much money it goes up, it is not. The only way it'll ever go up is the repeal of the freeze. And I believe if there's ever a repeal of the freeze, that whoever's involved and everybody else is going to get caught because we all going to be looking for different jobs. That's bar none. Our representative, Senator, it don't matter. If they ever repeal the county freeze, the city freeze and the school freeze, they're going to have to find another job because I guarantee you they're going to be voted out.
Let me ask you this, though. Is, is the whole state, if they was asking for that, that one cent tax, do you think that if we stay in, that's the, I'm thinking that the, some of them thinks that that's the reason that the state wants to raise it, raise the one cent voted in? And they rolled the, the property tax back. But that can't be done, can it?
No. It's just.
Or can, you know what I'm saying? Can the state raise, that's like we did with the regional.
Right.
Kind of, because we couldn't get out of that one. We tried to get out of it, we couldn't. Okay. We, we trying to get out of this now, is it's similar to the regional deal?
No, this is not. No, this is not because, the thing is, we, we meet the requirement for it if we stay in or if we get out because we have the freeze. We, we meet those requirements. And those requirements are, I mean, their freeze was passed by the legislators.
Yeah. But why then would some counties, it'd be better for them to stay in than it would for us?
Because they don't have freezes like we do. They're not frozen. They have, they, if, if one of them just say that, and I believe, I'm not sure, I'm not, like I said, Pierce County, I'm not 100% positive. If the county has a freeze and Blackshear doesn't and Patterson doesn't, they would be better, the county would be better to stay in. That way they can, they can work it out. They can work out the floss. If, if one of these cities that does not have a freeze opts out, that, that sales tax is done because they don't have, they don't have a local legislature, they don't have a local freeze, a floating home, because you said you're already a floating homestead. So they, they have to, if they opt out, that's done. They can't, they can't pass it. It cannot be given, the, the people cannot even vote to keep it in. The only way that can change after the opt-out date is if they decide they want legis, local legislation to mimic what 581 does for them or freeze. And they get that, get that passed in Atlanta, that's the only way they can, they can then be eligible for that floss. Our, our best bet is opt-out because our freezes is by far better than anything they got. I don't care, I'm going to say, I do not care what our state representative is, is going around saying because he does not understand what this bill does, specifically to Ware County. He's more worried about what's going on in other counties that he represented because we've talked about it. He does not, he does not see what it's doing, what the benefit Ware County is. And I understand 60%, over 60% of the people voted for it. I'm one of the 60%. That was to help all the other taxpayers. It didn't help ours. It did not, that, that helped ours at all.
Okay, what's this 590 bill or something that came out today? What was the name of it? The number on it that they changed the date or something?
Going to get an extension on it?
Yeah, get an extension on the date. What, what was that?
That, that, that House bill's in and it's just come out of, it just come out of the ways of many spending. It's got to be voted on by the Senate. It's got to be voted on by the House. It got to be signed by the governor before the end of the month. And all that is, is, and all that is, is changing the date.
Move the business.
Senator Huff Setler was very adamant that the Senate was not going to take that up and change the date. Because he's the one that wants everybody to be.
Mr. Chairman. That's all I got. Go ahead.
You know, and that was one of the things that I asked Roger about, which I've been in dialogue with him and he's been agreeable to listen to my concerns and give me the answers as best he can. But one of the things that I was concerned about and which he gave us all a copy of last time, that if we opt out and say down the road, if the state comes up with something that's saying, hey, well, everybody's going, uh, you can put the referendum on, or you're going, we're going to impose this one cent tax on you. But based on what the information that he's given to me, we can opt out. If we decide to put it on referendum to try to get the floss types, we can do that. And it's up to the voters at that point.
Yes, that's right.
Vote it in or vote it out. But I didn't want to, for us to be mandated that we. that we impose this tax without the citizen having some say on it.
No, that, that's, the, the citizens, the only, the only one that, that the county and the city can do is the laws. The local option sales tax. So that's, that's the only one that does not go in front of the voters.
Because you remember
And that's for, directly for property tax roll.
And I know this is maybe not apples to apples, but with that, uh, regional t-slosh, they were led to believe that, okay, if, if you don't get in, you opt out of it, you know, you can keep what you got, and you can have, you can go it yourself, where I can and where across could win it themselves. Well, after they got through, then they pull them back into it. And, okay, now, they could have fought it, but you're talking about a long battle, you're talking about a lot of money, and at the end of the day, you still may lose. So that's what was always kinda hanging over my head, that I didn't want that to happen again. But like I said, this is not apples to apples.
Well, I, I'm gonna say, this is the commission's choice, whether you're gonna opt in or opt out. It's my professional choice that you should opt out, because it's not gonna do our taxpayers a bit of good. It may end up costing them more money just for the, the dealing with assessors. It's not gonna affect me personally, I mean, as, as a tax commissioner, the, what I've gotta do with my job. That, that doesn't affect me. It affects the assessors on the values, keeping track of all the values and all the changes and, and the rates, and gotta make sure they got the right number. And if they don't have the right number and, and on somebody's, and it's, and they end up getting sued, you can't get sued. There, I don't know, I'm, I'm just saying, that, that, there's, it's a, it's it's set up a recipe for disaster if, if, if somebody messes up.
Okay. Let me ask, is, is anybody in the public, out in the audience oppose this thing? Just anybody opposed that we opt out of it?
We're just learning about what's happening. Tonight, I've never heard about a freeze.
Okay. Would you come up and, uh, Roger, could you, I mean, you don't think, how, how do you feel about it?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Before, Mr. Brown, can I get you to state your name and address?
That's what I wanted him to come up, you know, I've asked you.
Jim Brown, Avenue thirteen, Ten Andrea Drive. This past year, we were reassessed, as most people were in the county. So I come down and, and talked with the appraisals and got them to come out to the house and reevaluate our house. And the square footage was wrong, and we got a reprieve. But nothing was ever mentioned about a freeze on our tax property, or our property tax, whatever it is considered. Homestead.
Homestead.
In fact, we, we found out that in past years, we did not have homestead exemption. And why it happened, they can't tell us. They don't know when, I, I know when it happened, I don't remember the year. But it was dropped for some unknown reason. So then I said, well, what can we do? He said, the only thing you can do is ask for it this year, which is twenty twenty-five. So we asked for it, and we, we got it now. But I don't know how many years we lived there without homestead exemption. But the freeze has never been mentioned to us. I don't know how far back it goes, or when the freeze started. Now, did that freeze the property tax or the value of the home?
The value.
If Roger could come back up, uh,
Roger. I think he, cause I think it was Mike Ball had a bill that did it, Mr. Brown, and also Mark Hatfield, and he can elaborate a little bit more on that.
Mike Oggs, when he was, uh, in his last year, he had local legislation passed up there in two thousand and one. It went in effect in two thousand and two. Mark Hatfield then followed suit and done the city and the, uh,
School.
In two thousand and seven, it went in effect in two thousand and eight. Now, um, Mr. Brown does have home, uh, homestead, and he is, it does have a frozen homestead. I'm, I'm just looking at the assessors thing, but I can't tell how far back it goes. But he is, he does, he is frozen. And that is the value that you pay the taxes on. That is not, it's not your taxes that are, so your taxes are done by the millage rate. And so when the millage rates drop down, and you, you already have a frozen value, your taxes are gonna drop.
So it was frozen in two thousand and eight?
Well, no, the, that's when the bill was put in. I, I, your house, I don't know when it was frozen. But I'm just saying, I'm looking at, at this year's twenty fours, and you do have a, a frozen homestead.
So there's no way of knowing when it was frozen?
Not right now, I don't. I, I can, I can go down, I can go down in my office.
But if, if he has homestead exemption, it is frozen. I mean, under this bill, it should be, ain't it?
No, so, un- under the bill five eighty-one, it does not freeze your homestead. All that does is say, are your fair market value, this, what it is, twenty-four is the base year for twenty-five. And there's no inflationary, uh, going, uh, rate gonna be put on it. So what you was valued at in twenty-four, that's your base year, twenty-five, twenty-six, they're gonna give a CPU index. It could be three percent, it could be two percent, it could be one, it could be five. Is whatever, is a number that the Department of Revenue Commissioner is gonna give us. And that is the taxable value of the fair market value that you, that you, they can tax, that the assessors can place on it. And that they send it to me, what tax, can be taxed on, if we did not have a freeze.
One other thing, you said it was based on twenty twenty-four. We had a reappraisal in twenty twenty-four. Is that what you're talking about?
The new, the new appraisal.
That's for five eighty-one.
Okay, alright. So now, the, the county tax and city tax, we're paying that as what, eight percent?
What's the meal on, on it?
If we elect to, to, to pass this F-floss, is that adding another percent?
Another penny be down.
Okay. Now, the city is also considering a one percent visitors tax for them to raise money for visitors to come to where county. That's another increase of one percent. So we're almost ten percent.
Yeah, I heard something about that.
So the city is, you said the city's proposing?
It was in this, yesterday, the Wednesday's paper.
Okay, I hadn't read that.
So we're looking at ten percent, which will put us at higher than any county in the state. So I'm for the F-floss, if it'll help us out with our taxes, but we don't need to be paying ten percent.
So the sales tax, the sales tax, the max is gonna be, is nine percent. That's the max it can be. The penny that the sales tax that the city's talking about is for hotel motel tax, their, their hotel tax, the tourism.
Okay, so that'll be, only be on the hotels?
Yes. That's not, that's not on everything.
Oh, just on tourists or something?
Yeah.
Just like when we go to Savannah, Atlanta?
So that's, that's what they're looking at on, is a hotel motel tax, not sales tax. Um, the max we can do is nine percent.
Alright. Do we have anybody else that? State your name.
Harry Davis, nine twenty-seven Barkley Street, and it's probably for Roger, but on the freeze that we're talking about that, that might pass, uh, and the homestead exemption, I get a little bit confused, is the, do you have to have homestead exemption to get the freeze, or is the freeze?
You have to have homestead in order to get the freeze. Once you apply for homestead, you get it, and then your property is your dwelling and five acres, if I'm not mistaken. Anything, anything else is subject to the increases based on the valuation. So like my house, I've got a, I got my house, it'll be my house and five acres. But now I've got a three thousand square foot barn. That is gonna be separate from that valuation. So if that valuation goes up, then, because of my barn, then that amount is gonna be, that's my increase that I'm gonna see.
Increase, okay.
But, but for my dwelling and the five acres that it sits on, it will never go up. My, 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 my personal, uh, valuation assessment on my property, I mean, it might increase by like about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars as far as the fair market value or close to it, but my taxable amount did not change.
Okay, so the homestead exemption
Froze that taxable amount, right. Regardless of what it appraises at, my taxable amount is frozen, and so is everybody else that has homestead.
And I guess another thing too, is whenever, okay, say, Phil, Eric, you stand there and you decide, you say you're home. Okay, well, whoever purchased of that home, they gonna have, they gonna go by the valuation that they have on the books then. They won't be able to get the same break you getting.
Right, they'll go, they'll go by whatever.
Whatever it is on the year that they apply for homestead.
And then when you purchase a place, then you gonna, so that's the way it kinda rolls.
Okay, that's, that's.
Yeah, the on- the only time a property is gonna change as far as that assess or that taxable value is if it changes hands, if it gets sold. Somebody else purchases it, whatever the assessed value is on it, then, whenever they, new person purchases it, that'll be the, the value once they apply for homestead.
You know, I didn't, I, I wanted y'all to say, uh, whether y'all for this or against it? You oppose it? Or you support it? You, you oppose it? The opt-out? You, you, you oppose the opt-out?
Mr. Chairman, just to make clear.
Mr. Brown say that you support, what'd you say? No, I'm talking, Mr. Brown, back there, I was trying.
I support it. She does not.
Okay.
Opt-out.
You, you wanna opt out? Okay, so you support opting out?
Y'all, y'all support, that's what I was asking you. Do you support to opt out? Okay, okay. I wanted to make sure I, is that what? Okay. Okay, y'all support the opt-out, okay.
Mr. Chairman, we may have one more.
If they'd come up.
Uh, Cherry, Milton Miles, uh, nine ten Cherry Street, Waycross, right here. And when we saw it in the paper about the, uh, the assessments, we was kinda concerned knowing, you know, with, whether or not being exempt, whether or not it was gonna change anything with that part of it. And when we talked with But anyway, he, he ensured us that everything that was going on with us was, you know, it won't be any changes. And what I was just hearing just now, like, uh, we sell, or if we, my, my concern right now would be, uh, like, we got our house, we give to our grandson to stay with us. Now, if we leave here and leave the house with him, then that would change with him, or would that still stay? That, would that exemption still be on the property? Will it be changed?
Roger, will you tell us about that?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's changing if it, if it doesn't sell.
So if you're saying that your homestead, and you leave it to your grandson, would it change? Yes, it would change. But it will, during, during the the year from July first, it, it, it goes as owner of record July fir- I mean, January first. So say that something crazy happens and y'all pass away mid-year. He will still get the, that benefit that, through that year. But then the next year, Janu- from January first, April first, he'll ha- he can go down to the assessor's office and sign up for homestead. And then it'll get frozen at that time.
Of what the house is assessed at at that time?
Now, we'll see, they, they have a bill, they, they're dropping, they, they're dropping bills like crazy right now. And, um, they, I think they dropped twenty-three yesterday. But one of them is, um, they're looking at dependents continue their, their homesteads and stuff like that. So, uh, we'll see what the legislature does on that. But as of right now, eventually, he would have to go and sign up for his homestead in his name and what he, what he qualifies for, not instead of what, what your father.
Okay, and on that point there, and I'm glad he brought that up, Mr. Miles. So what if one of, either one of them were to pass, and the other of the house goes to them? Would that same scenario, would it be, they would still be able to? They would still get the same?
If they're both still joint owners of the property. Now, if one of them owns it, and there, it's just your name on the property, but your wife's name is not, then it would run into the same problem that same situation, or, or would it?
Like I said, both our names on the property, so.
So where that goes, it depends on what county you live in. And I was saying that, I'm saying that that was a hundred fifty-nine ways. The assessors in different counties do it different. Some people with, if it's just one name on it, some people, some counties will, will just let the spouse continue on under the same homestead. Some of them take it off and make them reapply. I do not know, I'm not gonna speak for Billy, cause I do not know what he does. So, um, on that, but if, if you're both on, on the title, then you will continue.
Thank you, Mr. Miles.
So are you for opting out then on this deal, uh, on the five eighty-one? I, I just wanna find out if you know what.
But, um, we, we still kinda up in the air, not knowing exactly where everything's standing, but, you know, from what I gather, you know, it seems, from what I'm getting, it seem like everything is fine. You know, what, what would be the real reason for?
Yeah, he kinda feel like I do a little bit.
You know, that, that, that would be the same, you know, I just
Okay, yeah.
How do you put it? Because if it's not broke, don't fix it.
I got you. Thank you, thank you for coming. Thank you for being there.
Mr. Chairman, I, I was gonna say, to, to your point about leaving things the way they are, and I agree, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. But the only way to leave things the way they are is to opt out. Because if we stay in it, if we stay in it, we're gonna have to add on more employees, more equipment, more stuff to do it, and it changes things. You know, opting out leaves it just like it is.
Right.
And still gives us the opportunity for the floss.
Yeah, explain that like that. Yeah, one, one other thing too, and Roger, I don't know if he ever mentioned, hit on this or not. If you opt in, then, well, we have like the frozen right now, that will all change, because now you go to a different method.
Because even if we stay in, our method, our freeze still supersedes the state's freeze.
Even if we opt in?
If we stay in, it stays the same.
So the assessors have to keep track of the fourth number, and the, the taxpayers get the best, get the best option of the two, which is always gonna be our freeze. They do not go from the freeze to, to this five eighty-one.
Okay, well, I just, I wanna make sure we
That's in addition to
Clear on all this.
It's, it's never gonna surpass our freeze.
But if we opt out, and they don't bother with us, everything will stay pretty much just like it is right now?
It'll stay like it is. Um, and, I mean, you know, people like, like to talk when they don't, when they don't, really don't know what they're talking about, they assume things. There is, this is not, this is not, and I'm gonna repeat again, it's not taking anything away from the people in homestead. It's not increasing, taking anything away that's gonna increase their taxes. The only way their taxes are gonna increase is if the millage rates increase. That's the only way.
So, yeah, made it right. So one last question, Roger, have you got?
And, and I do wanna say again, the senate bill, Russ Guzman, our senator, dropped the, uh, the senate, uh, senate bill to lower that, to allow the school system to lower their millage rate to ten without losing their money, their QBE. And that's in, that's in the offer. And if that passes, then, and that's the reason why there's a, a basic increase on some people's, when they said they was increased. when they said they was increased, they, at school, because they could, the school could not roll back to what they needed, what they would have rolled back to, without losing twelve and a half million dollars. They would have rolled back to twelve, to a mid-twelve, but they couldn't go to fourteen without losing that money. And, um, and then this is, it will fix that, where they can, they can roll back to at least, no, no lower than ten.
So you understand that it's still based on, put ACCG, I know they sent out something, that if we opt-out, there will be no provision, where we will have to be opt-in to this process?
Right now.
Okay. I hope, I hope it stays that way.
But if they, if they change that, let me say, if they, if they go and they change anything, it's got to go back in front of voters again. Because this is a constitutional amendment that they voted on that passed that allowed y'all to opt-out. And it stated that on about.
Which that's the biggest difference between that and that T-sploss that we talked about earlier in it, is that the T-sploss was not a constitutional amendment. This is.
No, it wasn't. It, and.
Which is why they could change it, the rules in it, without it going before voters and all the stuff.
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
You may have any other questions for me?
I think that's all. Roger, I appreciate it.
And I'd like to ask the commission one, one more question.
Would the commission ever consider people over sixty-five not having to pay school taxes? Who do not have children in school? It's left up to the commission. I've already talked with representatives, and that's what it stands, so, just a question.
Well, that's a good one. I've been asked that several times. Is that, I don't, I don't know who can answer that one now, Roger, huh?
Or even me.
Roger, you know the answer to that one? Jim, I'm glad you asked that one.
So for, uh, any school exemption that, one that would be requested by the school, you have to go in front of the school board. But to get that passed, there needs, you'll be, uh, the representative to Atlanta. It's got to be passed in Atlanta for that local legislation to provide any, um, any relief, tax relief from the school system by the school. It's got to be done in Atlanta. And I, I will say, I mean, there's counties that have it. There's, uh, Wayne County, if I remember right, the way theirs is set up, is they reach a certain age, they, they don't pay any, any school tax on anything they own, anything. That's, that's, it doesn't matter how many, how many acres, is how many parcels don't have, you know, doesn't matter how many houses you have. And there's, there's other counties that have floating homestead that wants to reach sixty-five. They get a huge, they get a huge exemption that is not income-based. Um, Ware County, we have, we have one that is a, a, uh, an age and income-based that is done by Harry, it was put in by Harry Dixon, and Chairman, you'll never be, you'll never need it. You'll, you'll never be, the, uh, the household income can be done more than twenty-five thousand dollars. The entire household, it, so if you live with five people, everybody's. If you live alone, it's just yours. If you have a spouse, it's yours to be a spouse. It does not matter how many people live in your house, it's a combined income. But they, they receive a twenty thousand dollar deduction exemption in addition to what they get from the state on the, on, on the county portion. Twenty thousand dollar in addition to what, anything they get from the state on the city portion, and twenty thousand in lieu of the, what they get from the, uh, school board, which, which at that age, the age is ten thou-, it'll be ten thousand dollars. It goes from ten thousand to twenty thousand on school, and goes from, uh, from four thousand to twenty-four thousand on the, uh, county portion, and just twenty thousand dollars on the, uh, city portion. But that's, that's an age and income, um, exemption.
Rogers, does, does that income include social security payments as well? If this is, if they're just on social security income?
They're taxed on it.
Or if it's just taxable income?
Social security, as I read it, is included.
I'm thinking it is, you, you have to, you have to take your, certainly your, um, income tax form into assessors. But there is an exemption, there's a certain amount for social security that is used for the exemption, also. But I will say, to get a, get a senior exemption on the, uh, school, you need to get with your local legislature.
It'd have to be something voted on or something, or by the county?
That'll have to be passed in Atlanta, and, um, I don't think it'd have to be voted on here for this process, though.
I was told by the representative that you have to start here, commission, then go there.
So we would have to approve it here?
You request it from here.
Or pass a resolution stating?
We'd have to. Can, what does it take to do that, Roger?
I don't know what it takes from y'all, you guys, but I would recommend, highly recommend y'all, uh, they, y'all talk to the school board if y'all wanted, if this.
Well, I'd talk to attorney, I guess, wouldn't you, Melvin?
If you'd like, we, we would follow up with an email with our attorney.
Yep.
Okay, let us find out.
My question is, would you consider that?
Okay.
You will?
Yeah, let's, uh, let's consider it. Would you, uh, let's make a note and go to the attorney with it and find out what we have to do. Probably the best thing to do.
Yeah, she stepped away.
I, I want to do that.
Yeah, I appreciate you bringing it up, but I, like, again, I think that we need to look at everything about it, what all is going to happen if, if this happens, you know, because, uh, you got a lot of seniors here, and, uh, like I say, it would be great. And, uh, some of us had kids that gone through the school system and then, you know, some maybe didn't. But I think we need to get with the attorney to find out all the ramifications and the pros and the cons of doing it, you know, and then, you know, go from that point.
Well, and I also would like, Roger was saying, meet with the school board as well.
Right.
Because, you know, they're kind of all in this thing together.
Right.
You know.
Also, I'd like just to make a point, and Roger can correct me if I'm wrong, if you opt-out, um, well, I'm back, if you opt-in, if you vote to opt-in, then you're in. But if you opt-out, and then you see that you need to get in, then you can come back in at the next, the next year. Is that how that works? Um, is that what, how that goes, Roger?
Well, what, what happens is, if you, you decide that you want something like that, you can have, pass local legislation to have that, and you have a, um, local legislation that year is five eighty-one. We won't come back in the five eighty-one, but you'll come back in the local legislation that year is five eighty-one. And honestly, I'm, I'm, I, I could, I cannot possibly see any valid reason that you would want to come back in. Because it would cost you more money then. It would cost the commission money, not the taxpayers' money, but it would cost the taxpayers' money to pay for it, what the county's got to pay for.
And another thing, the floss, if it was voted by, if it's put on referendum to be voted, that's just for our county. It's not a regional floss like a T-sploss.
Yeah, just upward county.
So our citizens will have that say, not our region.
Yes.
But then, see, what I said, if the state wants to do it, then the state can referendum that one cent if we stay in.
The state can.
They can't?
The state, state can't do anything on sales tax, referendum that. They, the first four, uh, four cents is theirs, and that's all they got.
That's the reason, it's hard for me to understand why you even want this thing. What, what's it for? What did, what did it come about? I mean.
What, five eighty-one?
Why is it, why is it necessary?
Five eighty-one? Well, it's necessary for the counties that went through a rebau like we did, and their houses went from like a hundred and fifty thousand to three hundred, four hundred thousand, and they get two thousand dollars off their forty, their forty percent value, their assessed values in their tax. So that's, it, this was, was designed that with the, uh, a, a CPU index, is like an inflationary index number, that if it's three percent, where their fair, fair market value, what their base value is, they can only be taxed on a maximum of three percent more than what they, what they already had the year before, even if their, their fair market value increases way more.
And Mr. Chairman, you have to remember that we're u-, we're kind of unique here because we have a homestead, frozen, city, county, and Board of Education. There's a lot of counties that in Georgia, their cities and Board of Education has no exemption, no, no homestead exemption. So that's the counties and cities that it helps.
Yeah, and, 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 get back to freezes. Um, there are typically, there's, there's about thirty. Most of, most of the thirty are just county. Um, there's a couple that has, has, has their cities involved too, but that, that hasn't, but we, we are unique. We're, we have city, county, and school. And where everybody else, their school, what the fair market value is, four percent value, they're taxed.
Okay. Any more questions from Roger?
Any other questions?
Not anymore. Anybody else got any questions they want to ask?
We'll wait, we'll wait till you sit down then.
Yeah, I know.
We need to get out of there. Okay, yeah. Alright, then nobody opposes it. Alright, we got any commission comment? Y'all got any comment anymore? Manager, you got any comment?
Other than the L-Meg was, was approved by DOT, so, um, we, we got that approved. The L-Meg, it's a local grant we get from DOT.
Yeah, right. Okay.
It's for roads.
I don't know if we can really bring it up in the, uh, hearing, can we?
Well, that was just a comment.
Comment.
So it wasn't about this, so it's just a comment.
I asked for comment.
Which is why the manager comment is not on that sheet.
Okay.
So never mind what you just said.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Listen, he worked hard. He, he deserves to get the rag on that one.
Good job.
That's what I asked for, that's what you gave me.
You asked for it?
I apologize. Okay, uh, any more commission comment, anybody else? Don't I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.